Thank you very much for being here today, I really appreciate it. Yeah, we won't keep you too long, I promise.
It's okay.
Well, maybe I shouldn't promise, but...
He knows where I live, I have not kept you too late. So, a little after 6:30, I'll call our Monday, September 16th meeting to order a roll call.
Joel?
Here.
Leah, here. Adam is unable to join us this evening. Sarah, here. Carly, here. Tom?
Here.
And here. Does our meeting been properly announced?
Yes.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic of which we stand, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would someone like to read our statement, please?
Sure. The Mount Horeh area school district, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you, Tom. Would someone like to make a motion to approve our agenda?
Someone.
Second. Motion by Sarah, seconded by Carly, to approve our agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Would someone like to make a motion to approve our September 3rd board regular meeting minutes?
Ooh.
The second. Motion by Joel, seconded by Carly, to approve our September 3rd board regular meeting minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Number three, addressing the board, school news.
Well, good evening, board members. It's a pleasure to see you all. I hope you and your families are enjoying a good start to the school year. Couple of items, I hope, within the next couple of weeks, we'll start to see some students will join us at our board tables, as well as our committees. Today, our seniors met for their annual meeting, and they were encouraged to participate. And then you may have seen an email I sent their way just a couple of days ago. There's some other announcements and these sorts of things going throughout the high school. We always love having board members help us with the selection process, so if your schedule does allow you to do that, maybe one morning before school here in the next couple of weeks, I'll put out a statement. Anybody who's available, we'd love to have you. We have a couple of stars here at our table. That's no news to you, but let me tell you about two fantastic board members who are going to be recognized at this year's local level of WASB recognition dinner. And that's happening on October 9th here for Region 12. First, a congratulations to Jessica Aragoni. She's reached Level 2 of WASB's member recognition program. And then, we're also grateful to recognize Carly Fisher. Two congratulations to Carly. Carly's reached Level 1, and both of them will be lauded at the dinner on that special evening. I wanted to also mention, if you haven't heard the news, Aubrey Hanks has really done a remarkable job working with a number of staff members through either grants and with community members and businesses through sponsorships and advertising. In her one year that she's been with our school district, she has able to, been able to augment our revenue stream by over $900,000. And so, I'm excited about the relationships that have been forged in our community, and the best is yet to come. She is just a dynamo. Well, I also want to thank everybody who has expressed interest in participating in our safety review task force. We have our selection committee meeting coming together tomorrow morning, and we should have a response to participants here in the coming days with an ambitious schedule to follow. And then, if you're looking for something to do on this matter, I have just the answer for you. We have a community-wide wellness program that's going on. It's our second annual, this year at Tyrol Basin. Just a great opportunity to visit with one another, enjoy the beautiful weather, and see a number of vendors. I understand there to be equine therapists who will be present, as well as others who just have a penchant for doing good and supporting kids and families. And then, lastly, I know I said "lastly" already, but if such good news going on, I'll give you a bonus round. Manny Gillis and Laurel Helen, have you heard about them? They are semifinalists for the National Merit Scholarship Award due to their good work on the PSAT, and they're going to take the ACT this year and no doubt just continue to make us proud. So, congratulations to those two fine folks, as well as all of our students who always represent us so beautifully on our exams. Thank you.
Board members, any other school news? Alright, moving on then, citizens comments.
I didn't see anyone sign up.
No citizens comments this evening. Number four, personnel transactions. Is there anything to highlight?
No.
All those in favor of improving our...
We need to know.
Would someone like to make a motion, please?
I was distracted when I thought you were going to approve Brian. Sorry. I was thinking of something clever to say, like...
Anyways, would someone like to make a motion? Motion by Leah.
Second.
Oh, second by everyone in the group. Second by Sarah. All those in favor of approving our personnel transactions, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number five, consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull out to discuss? We have several of those cooperative agreements that Dr. Serna pointed out to us.
I would have a question about the cooperative sports, I guess. How does the travel work for that? Is that all by the parents, or do we do a bus from, especially for football, do we take like one bus from Barbel to here?
Great question. In fact, that is the case. So, the students who participate in the co-op football, they travel over here, and then we collectively then travel as a team to each away event. As it relates to hockey, though, that's a little different because we anticipate probably three people at the most who will attend, and they usually work on some kind of carpool out to Stone, which is going to be our new hockey partner, assuming that this is approved.
On the cost for the hockey, I see that there's a minimum per student. Is that...I haven't seen that in any other agreements, that's just a strict cost share. What's the reason for the minimum?
Ice time.
Just ice time?
Yeah. I think also, a lot of the materials, the pads, and those kinds of things tend to be a little more expensive.
Anything else?
And then, just on the agricultural thing that we've been doing for a long time, I know that's always space-driven, how are we as far as having room for additional students, things like that?
We're absolutely in a good spot there. Thanks for asking. We wouldn't engage if we felt like to.
I would be, but I just...
I appreciate you asking. Yes.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Someone.
Second. Motion by Sarah, seconded by Leah, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number six, discussion items. Now, the first one is education committee, and Adam is not here, so we'll delay that. Community Coalition. Sarah, do you have anything?
We did not have a meeting. We won't have until third weekend in October.
So, the only one, and it is the Village. Nate Gogger is the school board liaison for the Village, so he and I have been checking in once a month. And I don't really have any updates that you all probably already know. The Luckin Farm is definitely a go. There's 20 acres that they're planning for rec purposes. At their meeting, they talked about the fire district budget. Oh, and two things that I will highlight. They were talking about possibly making some changes to their tax pamphlet that goes out with the tax bill. I don't know if there's any, we've tried in the past to suggest a little bit more information about, you know, the school district part of the tax bill. I don't know if there's anything we want to review or look at. And then, I just also wanted to highlight that our student member has already started joining in, and it is Shavon Woods, one of Adam's daughters. So... Nice. That was, that was, that's about it. Alright, so, moving on then to 6B, the WASB Annual Convention attendance. So, the convention this year is January 22nd through the 24th, which is a Wednesday through Friday. We usually go on Tuesday night, because it starts really early Wednesday morning. There's usually a vehicle that goes, I believe Scott is often the driver, or you can drive on your own if the schedule doesn't work for you. It's at the Baird Center in Milwaukee. They're, we usually typically stay at the hotel across the street. On Wednesday night, there is a dinner hosted by the Baird that we usually attend. I'm looking at Duxler, I'm just confirming that we're doing the same things that we are doing. I would highly, if your schedules allow, the sessions are usually pretty informative. Learn a lot. The school district is presenting too, and also presenting too. But, it also gives us a chance to just be together, and to, you know, the whole time is, you know, a publicly noticed meeting, so that we can have conversations, we can learn together, we can talk about what we're learning. So, it's just a good opportunity, opportunity to collaborate. So, if your schedule's allowed, it would be great if we could. Last year, we had almost everyone, only one person didn't go. Six out of seven, actually. So, and, no pressure, if your schedule doesn't allow, just if it does.
I highly recommend driving that with Scott and I, because we're fun. Sometimes he lets us get ice creams.
Thanks to Chelsea Hedge's good work, we have hotel rooms already lined up, and it doesn't require you to go outside. It's one of those walkways pop up, because...
Because it's always cold.
Yes.
It'll be the coldest week of the year. Every year.
Yeah.
Every year. It's the coldest week of the year, and there will be, someone will have a blizzard in the state of Wisconsin, and you'll see whoever superintendent that is running around that morning trying to figure out what to do.
One of the things I might just remind you of is if, you could please let me know, maybe by the end of October of your availability, because what I'd like to do is release the hotel rooms that we won't need, otherwise we get charged for them. Just assume not today.
I have to be, you can smart me down now.
Yeah. Down, I won't.
Okay.
Sarah, me too, but I think Sarah will do that.
It's already locked out, so...
Oh, Joel's yes.
I don't know where you are.
You're, that's a lot.
I'm in trouble too, I'm in a horse in trouble.
Anyone have any questions or further discussion about the annual convention?
I would recommend if you are going to go up Tuesday, because it starts, I think the first session Wednesday is like it...
It's like eight.
It's eight, and then there's breakfast at like nine.
Oh, okay.
That's the one time they give you breakfast as well, some years. Some years they have, they show up and we're like, there's no breakfast. There's always pressures, where's the breakfast?
I think I've gone nine out of 12 years, so, we recommend it. I haven't took Max as an infant, so, he went. Highly recommend it. I always learn a lot.
We've definitely come back with ideas. Alright, moving on, then 6C, our referendum presentation. Dr. Serna?
Well, good evening again, and thank you so much for, those board members who've been a part in the creation of what I'd like to share with you this evening. It really has been a collective effort on the part of not only our board members, but members of the Gray Architect Planning Team, Scott, and David, Rachel, Johnson, and myself. And so, as we walk through this tonight, it's my intent to kind of give you the perspective of what we'll be sharing with community members when we get ready to do the tour here in a couple of days. But, also important to me is to make certain that what you hear tonight squares with your understanding, and of course, I don't have a corner in the market as to all of the ideas. If there's something that we should be adding, I want you to please collect those ideas throughout the presentation, and then let's talk about it at the, at the end of this presentation. Your idea might be in some other slide, that it might just be best to do that towards the end. And so, with that being said, if you don't mind me, just kind of working off some notes this evening, but at the same time, sharing this slide deck with you. And so, to this point, really, our agenda for the event is to explain four things. The background, the history, if you will, the need, why are we coming to the community for a capital referendum, and then offer some solutions, and explain what that investment means to our community. First, the background. I think when people think of Mount Horeh, they often think of it as a district that we can really be very proud of. We're doing some things that are very cutting-edge. We get headlines like the one you see in the newspaper here in the bottom left, and we're continuing to find ways in which we can set individual students up for success. The International Baccalaureate Certificate Career Program is just the latest example of that. But, we do have kids that not only excel academically, but also in co-curriculars, whether it be BAM, or student council, or volleyball, golf, you name it. Our young people are involved, sometimes in all three sections, and we are mindful of the contributions and how they represent our district so beautifully. And it's important to recognize that this capital referendum reflects our long-range facility plan, and our long-range facility plan has a number of phases. The first phase is the one that you see here to the top left here, in which the district in 2017 successfully completed a high school referendum in the amount of $38.5 million, of which $33 million was needed in order to effectuate the community's vision for its high school, and to this day, just continues to be really a source of pride within our community, thanks to the generosity of our community. And now, it's time to look at Phase 2 of our long-range facility plan, specifically looking at our primary center and early learning center. This is an overview of the work that's been done by the board's Facility Steering Committee. I purposely put in March 2016 as a launching point into this diagram, because this has been an evolutionary process, not a revolutionary process. This has been a process in which we've been working this plan for some time, and it really is born out of the Facility Steering Committee work, in which a district-wide analysis was completed in March of 2016. And we've come back to our community on a number of occasions, just to talk about, hey, this is where our Facility Steering Committee is thinking. Let's survey the community to get their input, their feedback, and then the board has thoughtfully taken that information and made a plan that helps support the recommendations, not only of the Facility Steering Committee, but also the survey results. And to this point, let's do take a moment to talk about the survey results. The Facility Steering Committee, represented by our parents, our staff, but most importantly, community members, which I think was a really neat addition, because 70-plus percent of our community do not have children in our school district. And so, it's important that we discern what their, what their thinking is. In fact, when that survey was recently administered, the score you see there, the 54.1%, is a weighted score that reflects that 70% of our community does think that the board's plan, the Facility Steering Committee's plan, is one that's worthy of consideration. And so, let's talk about the needs first. You can see the ballot question that the board approved this past July. Checking the box "yes" would indicate that you do support that the district would spend approximately $34 million for the purposes of constructing a new building that would be attached to the current primary center, would allow us to do all the fixtures and furnishings that would be necessary, including classroom space, gymnasium space, renovation of cafeteria and kitchen areas and the like. And then, there are other areas that would also be a part of the district's Phase 2 Long-Range Facility Plan that I will be sure to get to during our visit here tonight. But suffice to say, it's a pretty comprehensive ask, but it's one that's been well-informed by the community and their feedback through our survey. As we began to draft the vision for the survey, it came down to three very simple ideas about our current facility needs. The first is really addressing our inadequate instructional spaces at the kindergarten level. And a building that was built in 1968, as was the Early Learning Center, does have some significant aged systems and infrastructure, and we hope to address that. And then, as part of our ongoing efforts, we continue to focus on safety, security, as well as accessibility for those who might need ADA or Americans with Disabilities accommodations. Let's take them one by one, if you don't mind. First, you can see here, let's, let's talk about the inadequate space for our classrooms. Anyone who has little ones at home probably knows that those little ones need to get a lot of room to move about. And we know that the current size of our elementary classrooms, particularly at the, at the kindergarten level, is really undersized per square footage in accordance with DPI, Department of Public Instruction standards. This despite the fact that we have amongst the lowest teacher-pupil ratio in kindergarten than most school districts in the region. So, that compounds the issue. And the way in which the Early Learning Center was developed, in order for kids to traverse through to different classrooms, they sometimes have to go through other classrooms while those classrooms are in, in session. And that obviously is not good, not good for learning. We know that at this level, we also need more materials in our classrooms to help teach to differentiate instruction. And our teachers, they're just masters at having a lot of resources to help meet those kids' needs. And so, add in not only those little bodies and those little desks, but then all of the other materials that the teachers need to have. And so, there's a lack of storage, quite frankly, and equipment is sometimes needing to be stored in the hallways and in the gymnasium. The second cornerstone, and this is an example of what I mean by that, you can see a lot of activity for kids, a lot of opportunity for kids to be kinesthetic in their learning, but there's not a lot of space for them to do that. And then, you can also see a number of the centers that our teachers so thoughtfully put together, that those take up space for kids while they're learning. And then, I couldn't help but love that little picture, that little girl. She melts my heart. Got that red Viking pride going through the hair. I wish I could do that. Now, aging building systems and infrastructure, this is the one that I think speaks to, why are we looking to add on as opposed to renovate? Most everything was built or left, ventilation, heating, plumbing services, some electrical. Our original to the building in 1968, that was 12 presidents ago. Lyndon Baines Johnson was still president at the time. And most of the Early Learning Center roof needs to be repaired. Now, that's not to say that we didn't touch the roof. There are times throughout the school's history in which we have taken steps to remediate roofing issues, but the community really has gotten a great return on investment in their roof. In fact, I think we're in overtime right now, in terms of that roof. And then, cooling. If any of you have ever been to the Early Learning Center during the first days of school, you might remember seeing these big barn fans that are in the middle of the hallway, just trying to get some airflow into the, into the hallways, and that creates condensation, moisture, kids sometimes slip. It's not the safest of circumstances. And about five years ago, we got a really great deal on some room air conditioners that we have vented right outside each classroom window. But here again, those are a temporary fix. Those are not fixes that can help sustain us as, as we move forward. And then, there's the kinds of things you might expect on a 56-year-old building. Walls, lighting, masonry, a lot of tuck pointing would need to be done. And we know that even if we were to renovate the building in its entirety, the cost could be just a little bit less to renovate, however, it still wouldn't give us what we need from an instructional standpoint. As much has changed in 56 years, I looked it up today, the cost of gasoline in 1968 was 35 cents a gallon. Well, what's changed since then? Well, we're now getting ready to install an electric bus in our school district.
And Steve, am I correct in remembering that with the cost of renovating versus what we're asking for in our referendum, it really wasn't that different?
It's not that different. I mean, there, it is less to renovate.
A little bit less, but not significantly. It's like a huge amount.
Yeah, good, good memory. And the last piece I'd want to mention about this is that when it comes to our heating system, again, it's original to the system, this little footprint of a building actually costs the same amount per square footage to heat, actually costs more, I should say, per square footage to heat than do some of our larger buildings. And so, it's just inefficient. It's inefficient. It served us well, but it's inefficient. Here's an example of what I mean by that. I took some pictures of the, of the heating system there now. If we wanted to buy parts to that, they're quite difficult to obtain, to source. And we know from the roofing perspective, we still get these ice dams. I worry about kids playing off from underneath that. And then, you can also see a couple of areas that are a little darkened in on that roof there to the right, that show where we've attempted to remediate water problems before. The, the last piece in the trifecta, if you will, of items that we're trying to address has to do with safety and accessibility. We did, back in 2017, take at least temporary steps to remediate entryway into the Early Learning Center. It used to be, when you came into the building, you were automatically in where children are at. And thanks to the board's good work, we, and the community's support, we were able to at least put in a little bitty vestibule in between that would allow someone to have to ring a doorbell in order to be brought in. We know that that may not necessarily serve our needs in the world today. The fire panel is outdated, in fact, is in bad need of repair. We know that some of our ADA areas, particularly playground areas, getting kids up and down from multiple floors is problematic for our young people as well. My vision around safety and accessibility also has to do with an idea of including ballers in front of our schools, particularly in the most highly-traveled areas. If you're not familiar with ballers, if you've been to Target, I'm sure all of us have, you know those big red balls that are out in front of Target? We can just wheel a bunch of them over to the, no, we won't do that. The idea, though, I think, is for us to provide some kind of safety effort that would preclude someone from accidentally and/or purposely trying to gain access using a vehicle of some sort. And there's really nice ways to do it, too. You could have some beautiful planters, for example, and maybe our FFA students could help keep those up, up to date and the like. There's lots of solutions, but the need, in my opinion, is there to take us to the next level in terms of safety. So, we've talked enough about the problems, how about we take a moment to talk about the solutions? This is a schematic, and we purposely, by the way, didn't want to invest any money in any kinds of architectural designs. We felt, A, that that's too presumptive on the district's part, and B, it wasn't factoring in an important ingredient of this, and that is our community. We want to make certain, because this is the community's building, if this were to be approved, that our families have an opportunity to tell us what this should look like, both from the exterior as well as the interior to the program. But you can see, the red area in Areas 1 and 7, those are new spaces that would be part of what has traditionally been the Early Learning Center. And creating some hard surfaces in playground areas in Area 6, moving students to have lunch in what is currently the gymnasium in the primary center, make that be our cafeteria, and then open up some more space, much-needed space for families and community members who want to host events, whether it be ballgames or these sorts of things, by having a two-court gymnasium. But also, offering opportunities for more space for families to be meeting in privacy with their teachers, or with social workers, or with counselors. We've made great strides as a school district for kids to have counseling sessions within our schools, but oftentimes, we don't have a place for those students to kind of have some privacy for that, and give them the respect and time they need. And then, also along that safety realm, item 10 there, you will see a proposed expansion of our parking lot area, and taking that roadway, rather than coming back out through Academy Street, which is, as it stands right now, will allow a bus drop-off, car drop-off to go all the way to... will allow a bus drop-off, car drop-off to go all the way down to Spelman Street and really open a great deal of green space. I have such hopes for that green space. Wouldn't it be cool to have an environmental-themed school in the elementary level and have kids work out in that area? It would just be a lovely, lovely idea. Also, the solution involves geothermal. And as you know, we would be building and enhancing off the good work that was done by the community in 2009 with the renovations that were undertaken at the primary center. The proposal that we have before the community would allow for geothermal to also continue at the elementary level. And this is, as I mentioned at the onset, there are things that we would like to do to take care of other high-need areas throughout the district that are also part of Phase 2 of that long-range facility plan. Continuing to look at our needs for special education students. At the middle school, there are some real ADA compliance issues right now with a building like the middle school that was built in the 1990s. And as we know, code has changed significantly. Here's an example of the district trying to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. With 2017, the referendum included a recommendation for a roof to be replaced. When we got up on the roof, we realized that we could get a little more life out of that. And as a result, that was part of the $5.5 million the board elected not to borrow, though it was authorized to do so because we felt as though we could get, you know, seven, eight, maybe even nine more years left of roof life. And so that would be part of the solution here as well. And then in 1997, there was an addition done to the high school. And if you go to those parts of the high school today, you will see some tuck pointing work that needs to be done. It's something we just can't let go, otherwise, of course, we open ourselves up to other issues down the road. If we were fortunate to pass a referendum, what might this look like? This is a preliminary vision of a potential implementation plan. I have been fortunate to be a part of a number of capital referendums in my career. And one of the things that I've always found helpful is to introduce a design-build-build process. It's very different than bidding the process first and then designing it because by designing it first, you are introducing a great deal more competition for contractors to come out and give you and sharpen their pencil and give you exactly what you're looking for. And if we were fortunate to be in this position, I would really look at us taking some runway time to develop our plan and then bring it to the bidding market and broadcast that request for proposals broadly. We know that there are a number of organizations who do good work that I think could partner with us very nicely. And then assuming that we could be happy with that, introduce a phased-in construction approach. The first part would be the addition to the primary center while students would still be participating in classes in the kindergarten, the current kindergarten building. This would be through '25, '26, with the proposed introduction of that new classroom sometime in the '26, '27 school year. There are some touch points that need to be made at the primary center as well. While I didn't go into detail on those, suffice to say they are immediate needs that we have for our students. And I'd be happy to provide a complete workflow for anybody who's interested in seeing what would be touched. But I also want to be respectful of people's time. And then you can see closing out project likely in October of 2027. This is just a very preliminary look. Let's do talk about the investment because it is an investment. When you look at Mount Horvare Middle, excuse me, Mount Horvare School District's mileage rate, out of 12 or 13 school districts in the region, we rank second to last. And that's because we continue to try to find that delicate balance between doing good and right by our students and staff while also making certain that we meet the needs of our community and our learners. Each of you, I know it because I talk to you on a regular basis, you are fully committed to leaving our school district in a better place than when you came on the board. And we feel the same way as your senior leaders and believe that the ask that we're making with this $34 million proposed referendum would be mindful of both, doing good and right by our kids, but also being mindful of the commitment that would be made to our taxpayers. On a $100,000 fair market property value, or what we call equalized property value, it would amount to about $68 annually. Knowing that most homes in this region were fortunate to be in a community in which our homes are significantly of higher value. So what would that mean on a $500,000 home? You see it at approximately $340 per year or $28.33 per month. This assumes some very conservative assumptions. First, it assumes 20 years of financing at a rate of 4.5% of an interest rate. And that our annual equalized property value would increase approximately 2% per year. And those of you who've been on the board a while know that our equalized property values over at least the past couple of years, that number has been in the double digits. This most recent year, I believe it's 8%. Is that right, Scott?
No, projecting over 8%.
Project over 8%. So it's important to just kind of put some things in the perspective. Based upon what we know now, what they're projecting versus what we'll get on October 15th from the state as well as state aid, this would be the potential impact for our community. And so I do want to take some time just to talk about this last piece, the investment to our young people and the cost. Due to your fiscal stewardship in this district, we have a very favorable bond rating. So when we go out to market, just like you might have a credit rating, some of you might know that, you have a credit rating. This is similar to a school district, their credit rating. It is very favorably viewed. And in fact, I would argue that if we were fortunate to go out to market, many people, many banks would want to take our business. And a conservative 4.5% interest rate is just that. It's pretty conservative as we know right now. I think even tomorrow, the feds or Wednesday, they're supposed to announce some potential, maybe a quarter point reduction. While that doesn't have a direct impact on the bond market for us, it is a psychological factor on what it could do for us. Our current bonds are in the high 3s, low 4s as it is. And so on existing debt that we have. And so I think that would be commensurate for us in terms of what that could mean for us as a school district. So I think the best point for me right now is maybe to just to see if I can't entertain any questions you might have. Want to do whatever I can to direct you to the right locations and maybe even share some additional community information if that would be helpful to you. So thank you for listening, intended. Did I pass the audition?
Woo! I have one suggestion. And really because this came up when we did the, whatever we did with the community, is they don't all know which buildings host who. So maybe at the very beginning, like, high school is 9 through 12, middle school.
Yes.
Because we do eventually say that, you know, the kindergarten. But if they don't know that the ELC is the kindergarten building, it at least gives them a frame of reference. Otherwise, if I was fantastic, thought the floor was good.
Yeah, the only thing that I would suggest is when you're talking about the solutions, these are improvements to the PC, you know, like, not just additions. But like, when you say like, oh, we're gonna put the cafeteria is now gonna be in the gym. That's because the cafeteria is in the basement. You know what I mean? Like, there's a few things that you could have just to like...
Paint the picture.
Paint the picture. But yeah, I agree. I thought it was nice. And I'm sure you've already thought about what some of the questions might be. Because a few questions popped up into my mind that I was like, oh, that's gonna be a question. Okay, do you want me to ask? I mean, like, why didn't we already fix the brickwork at the high school? Yeah.
It's costly.
Well, right. I just mean, like, we just did it of the referendum for the high school. So like, why was that part? You know what I mean? Like, things like that, I think, might come up.
If someone's watching tonight, that's a great question. And maybe the appropriate response would be, again, at the time that we did the high school, we thought we could get a couple more years of life out of it, like we did with the IC roof. You're right, there could be times that we could have touched some of this sooner.
But no, but we were trying to be physically responsible.
Yeah.
And I think just really emphasizing when we talk about the investment, any amount of money is more money. But when we look at the breakdown, this is not a lot of money for families. You know, like, I don't want to belittle it, any money is a money, but like, $68 per year for a family who runs a $100,000 home, you know, or 200... You know what I mean? I think that these are reasonable. It's a reasonable ask. I'm comfortable with this. I'm glad that this is the rate that you were able to figure out there.
I had wondered, I don't know if it's overkill, but the prior slide to this is the graph with the 8/11. And then is it worth showing that even with adding the 68, like, do you put the graph a second time with the 68 on top and show that, like, all it does is move us up like two? Like, we're still, we're still pretty far on the low end even should the referendum pass.
It's a great suggestion. We thought about that. And the reason why we didn't is because we don't know what's gonna happen with the other... The ones in... I should have mentioned this. They've got referendums going. But to your point, you're exactly right. If all things stay the same and Mount Horvare moves, you're right, we would still be...
Pretty far to the right.
At the bottom, core title at least.
Yeah, just two things for people that maybe haven't attended any of the meetings or any of the questions, or why have we, let's say, why have we neglected the Early Learning Center? That all these things have, you know, built up, built up. So now we're saying, hey, we're gonna tear this building down. So what do we, what's our argument to say that why we haven't maybe kept that structure to where we wanted it, I guess? I guess what would our argument be for that?
I quibble with the assumption that the district hasn't invested in the Early Learning Center.
Well, I agree. I'm just saying from an outside perspective.
I'm pretending that you're a... Mr. Taxpayer thinking about... And just because it's being recorded and we want to make sure, to share people your better response. Is that, you know, honest to goodness, we have touched the Early Learning Center. The truth of the matter is that we didn't have consensus from our community about what to do with the Early Learning Center. You may remember, we've been testing this question now probably since I got here in 2016. And every time it's been 33% say demolish it and start over. And the other 33% is, you know, let's renovate. And then another 30% said, I don't know. And it wasn't until this most recent survey where people began to put their nickel down and said, okay, it's time for us to start really putting money into this. So to be sure, we continue to address safety needs and to address upkeep of the facilities and those sorts of things. But we've been very purposeful. We're not investing a large amount of money that would yield the return on investment we would like.
Thank you for that answer. That answer is exactly what people need to understand. They just drive at home, hey, we've been looking at this for a while. We didn't know what to do necessarily. We didn't want to waste money. And now we finally feel it's the time. Yeah. We've taken other priorities of other buildings first. And now it's time for this one.
It is Phase 2 of our...
Correct.
You've also had another question, I think I heard.
On the community survey, I remember you saying that it was, it's the 54% is a weighted result. I think maybe when people just read it, they wouldn't understand that. But you did mention it in your talk that it's based off of a weighted percentage of, you know, what? Maybe someone might ask how that was calculated or...
And indeed, we would, well, the way we should be calculating was 70% of whatever that score was for our folks who didn't have children in the schools. We weighted that 70% over those who have children or were employees of our district.
So I think maybe you explained that.
Yeah. That's a great, great suggestion.
This is kind of a minor thing, but in the slide before this, when you've got the timeline, I wonder if it'd be helpful to stick a marker for that survey in the timeline, which might give you a better... Because that one was like the spring, right?
Yes.
In between the March and, like, after the February/March?
Yes.
And if that helps give you a better transition to the next slide, say? Then that helps reinforce the picture that we surveyed, we surveyed, we surveyed, we surveyed.
We did that in March, didn't we?
But I also agree, I had written the same thing down. I agree that however we can anticipate and preempt that question about, that's, I think, we heard in some of the feedback. And then the other thing is, I don't, I don't know, I'm back and forth on how much you get into it. I don't think you get into the weeds at all. But we've had some really good school finance education in previous ones. And I don't know how much you incorporate into that to help proactively answer the question of why? Like, why can't our annual budget just, why can't we set aside $10 million a year and do it out of, you know, why does it have to be a referendum?
Yeah, thank you for that question because inevitably, that's a question that comes up almost every time. We anticipate probably having between 13 and 15 minutes to do the presentation.
Yeah.
And we talked about this as a team, that maybe it's best to wait for that question to be asked.
Yeah.
And there's a couple of those that I have, you may have seen in some of my notes even. I said, if asked, say this, kind of thing. Because we know 12 to 15 minutes. I think I actually went over, didn't I?
Yeah, I did tell you.
But I'll keep on working on it. That's the goal, is to make it 12 to 15 minutes.
The only other small argument I could see someone making is the need for, space-wise, the size of the classrooms. I believe you mentioned that we have the lowest ratio, or a low ratio of teacher to student currently. And why is that? Two things related to that. We anticipate that the overall number of students is gonna decline slightly over time. Right? And the size of that facility has covered what our needs, student-to-teacher-wise in the past. So why is that, why is that a big issue now going forward, I guess? Maybe hammer home why the instructional needs are different.
But what DPI's regulations are what they are.
Yeah, yep, yep. They're different.
And how education has changed over time.
I'm getting nitpicky, but...
That's what I want. That's why we're doing this. So I'm grateful for the thoughtfulness that you're bringing to this. I think part of the answer, though I don't know if it's the whole answer, is we're building a school for 50 years from now, not a school for just five or 10 years from now. And I suspect that as urban sprawl begins to continue to come out of Madison, Verona, we will eventually be on the receiving end of that. And how can we proactively be responsive to that need for that additional space? But I do need to think more on that. Thank you for the suggestion.
It's tough. I know how to think of it on opposite end and say, okay, well, that's the... Like, I understand we need to plan for the future, but other people may be like, well, that's future person's problem. Why do I have to pay for this?
So I was waiting for someone to ask the question, you know, you're taxing me too much, right? And the truth be told is, we're still facing economic headwinds as a country today. Let's be honest. I mean, you know, for families who are, might be underemployed or not employed at all, this could have an impact on them. But remember that good schools lead to higher property values and resale values. And the fact that someone did it for our kids when they were in school, now's our opportunity to pay it forward for the next generation. And if it's not altruistic in your thinking and it is just dollars and cents, just understand that there are lots of communities, I can point my finger to at home, that when they have bad schools, what happens to the property values of their school, of their homes? So we're really in the sweet spot in Mount Horvare to have just the great schools, great community, strong housing that continues to escalate the value. But with that comes responsibility.
So the only thing I would say is move the ballot question to the end.
Okay. Okay.
Because that's the ask.
That's the ask.
Okay.
And that is the good point for the end.
I actually wonder, kind of like...
I actually wonder, I feel like, oh wait, we haven't talked about why we're asking the question when you first brought it up.
Oh, sure.
So obviously a slide that says why, but then the ballot question should be the last And then other than that, it's just, I think the board should be cast of our, heads of our ELC, our leadership team.
Rachel Johnson, like a Chia Pet?
Yeah.
Kind of thing.
Love that, I sure hate the word. They're all gonna be crumpled up the dog. It'll do two things, well, it will protect the school, but it can do something to aim it. It's terrible, I could see Kurt Nichols being like, yes, I'm gonna modify it.
I love some Viking, like some Viking statues. You live there, I'd be too expensive.
Even if you just get the wrong ones, like Target decorates them.
They do, they get buckets and beach balls.
Do fun things with them.
Christmas ornaments.
If I could just remind you of something, I know that you are mega, mega busy, but I also want you to know that it's great when the community sees you as board members, and to the extent to which you wish to be a part of the tour, you certainly are always welcome to come with. And in fact, if there's certain kinds of slides from the deck that we just showed you tonight that you'd like to speak to, that'd be even better. These are the number of opportunities that we'll have to do this. No pressure, even if it's there just because you just, you know, maybe want to answer a couple of questions. But I'd ask if you do that, if we just keep mindful that we don't really want more than three board members there, otherwise, we have to notice the meeting and that becomes a bit problematic, so. That's our world tour that we get to have, and I know many of you have conflicts with October 7th. Thank you in advance for understanding that I won't be at that board meeting, and thank you to Associate Superintendent DeYoung for helping fill in here that night, but we'll be at two different events that day.
Steve, could you just mark me down, I think the Town of Perry, I know that first one.
Awesome.
I know that one off the top of my head, I can do that.
So, do you have a helicopter to get you from one to the next, Steve? What's the...
That's not part of the referendum.
I knew so, nor is it part of the operating budget. I was curious.
I contacted the good folks at the Town of Perry and said that, could you put me on towards the end of the meeting?
Okay.
You can put me down for the 22nd ELC open house.
Oh, cool.
It's the only night that there is not, like, a conflict, so I can do that one.
And that, by the way, is still taking shape. We're talking about what that should look like, maybe a little different than what we've done with some of the visits, because this is an opportunity now for people to get in and see with their own two eyes, what book we're referring to.
And I will go to the, I'll look at some of these other ones, but the Martins and all the Good Morning Mount Horne.
Oh, cool.
I can do that. I...
I should be able to do the Springdale one, I think. Okay, great, thank you.
So you just needed to call us all out?
Yeah.
Wait, 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 now, let's do it!
This is great.
I could do more than the two, but I'll wait to see.
Yeah, you could also... You can take my name off of other people's.
No, forget it.
And I don't want to not be helpful when it comes to the presentation, but you are, like, honing it down to the right amount of time and the right thing to, like, me jump in and be like, I'll do Slide 12, like, I don't know if that's gonna disrupt, so I don't, I don't know, like, if we have a different role, like, we introduce you, or we, like, I don't...
Answer questions, maybe?
Yeah, like, if there's just, I mean, or even we just stand there and smile away, however we can support, but I feel like to take a slide out of the deck might not be the, it might be a little disruptive if we're trying to be succinct.
Okay.
I mean, but I don't want to speak for everybody else, but if somebody else is like...
I really want to slide three.
Either way, however you think is most effective. Yeah, I don't want to...
I just don't feel like you all have come to this and you didn't feel like you've got a chance to say what you wanted to say too, because we wouldn't be doing this without your leadership, and I don't want that to be lost, and I work at the pleasure of the board, you guys are the ones that are doing the heavy lifting.
This is, I'm just thinking this off the top of my head, but, you know, again, like, if we welcomed you, or introduced you and welcomed to thank the people that were there, you know, like, you know what I mean, just because we are incredibly appreciative that they're coming to learn, and I'm incredibly appreciative that you're taking the time to, you know, give the presentation, so.
I've been practicing the Viking horn so I can call the...
I'm curious how you're handling the meetings, are you at the beginning of their meetings, like, on their agenda?
Yeah, we've asked to be on each of their agendas, and then this leads very nicely into another piece that I wanted to share with you all tonight. We have four letters to the editor, each one of them will be focused on each of the three facets that I spoke of, and the first one really introducing all of those meetings and opportunities to come learn. And then we have three podcasts, one that's already in the can, as they say, and that has to do with infrastructure and building systems that we recorded the other day. It's a good seven to eight minutes, and it's a roundtable conversation with Aubrey Facilitating, including Dave Reed and Ryan Sands from Bray, and then myself, that kind of does a deeper dive into it. And we've got two more podcasts that we'll be recording here this week. Those will, the release of those will coincide with the letters to the editor. And then lastly, we have a number of videos that highlight each of these three areas as well, so if people can't come to the open houses, we want them to see firsthand, so the videos will allow that. A number of mailers, and continued communication with families through coffee clutches that I'll be hosting at Shulins and a couple of other kinds of things we'll be doing, so. Always welcome at any time, we'd love to have your insights and input. The coffee clutches are a little less formal, so if your schedule happens to allow, I think we're doing one on October 21st over at Shulins. Come on by, let me buy you a cup of coffee.
Just back to the presentation, one thing that you did on the survey slide show that we had a response from every municipality, I think for the outlined municipalities, we need to make sure they understand that they, there is a representation in the survey. And then we could bring chrome in each one of these. We have to... I know, I forgive it.
There. This is, again, also minor, on the safety, the first safety and accessibility slide under need, there, one of the bullets was a little, I think maybe missing a word or had an extra word.
I saw that.
Um, oh, yeah. Under the need, early learning center flooring is peeling, or peeling and needs removal, or... Yeah, I don't know.
Sometimes we look at this so many times.
I know.
It brings up punctuation.
Or it needs to be removed.
It's purely needs removal.
Yeah, you could just say it's peeling, I don't know.
I believe that's asbestos-based flooring.
I was just about to go there, you're exactly right, it would require asbestos abatement.
Anybody else have any other comments, questions, suggestions?
Thanks for the feedback, it was very helpful.
Thank you. All right, number seven, moving on to our action items. Erin and Brian. These are all second readings related to Title IX. So we just take them each individually, I'm guessing we need to have those separately? All right, so starting off, Board Policy Number 113, equal educational opportunity and non-discrimination on the basis of sex and education programs or activities. Do you all want to present anything? Does anyone have any questions?
I think the biggest piece to note is that we took your feedback that we had heard, and we implemented, we talked with our legal counsel, and we were able to implement, I think, most of what, you know, the small tweaks that we had heard. I sense, hopefully that's not here, but you're hoping to accomplish.
Is that title represent where your head's at?
Yes, I know, yeah.
Great.
Yes.
Is it, like, is it missing a word?
I was just gonna say that entirely.
Sex-based, what?
Sex-based...
Characteristics.
Basis of sex and sex-based something, and it just like, something, it doesn't flow right.
Characteristics.
If you scroll down, yeah, we broke it up into definitions down there.
It just looked that sentence didn't read right.
The title or something. Because sex-based is like a description, right? It's a qualifier, but...
There isn't a, no, that's just in the title.
Does it need to be in the title, or defining it below? I mean, the whole title is just weird, it's just a weird title, the whole, I'll say it's a weird title.
But the point of putting sex-based in there was that's the distinction.
Distinction.
Is that, that's really what's being added.
Great.
To a large extent, too, this is sex-based criteria, sex-based.
Criteria, yeah.
I don't know if criteria is right, though.
Characteristics.
Characteristics, yeah, yeah.
Word that I could think of.
The only other thing is because of how it's listed in the definitions, is it is sex-based discrimination and sex-based harassment, and so it says non-discrimination on the basis, so now you got the non-discrimination on the basis of sex and sex-based harassment in education programs or activities.
That makes sense, that makes more sense, I just...
Call her in.
Yeah. My English brain was just like, oh, something's...
I missed it, I went through it after you guys too, and I missed it, so, sorry.
Yeah.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve with the title change?
To remove.
Second. Motion by Sarah, seconded by Leah to approve Board Policy 113. Any further discussion?
There's a couple of small typos on that.
Oh, all right.
Can you send those to us? Yeah, I can send them either.
I agree.
Because it's not a...
All righty. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Moving on, Board Policy 411, equal educational opportunities for students. Again, Mary, to discuss this, anything to, no?
Just a few, about EOP, I got that one sentence and added that into the discrimination, so.
And again, just to reiterate, the reason that these are spelled out like they are is because these are referencing specific law, because we have a lot of procedure in these, but, okay.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Sarah to approve Board Policy 411. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Board Policy 443.71, students anti-bullying, harassment, non-Titel IX intimidation.
That line was just added in the definitions.
Yeah, appreciate the definitions.
Those were...
Any questions or comments?
Motion to remove.
Second. Motion by Joel, seconded by Carly to approve Board Policy 443.71. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Board Policy 511, non-discrimination and access to equal educational opportunity.
I really want, we're not changing the 511 policy.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Sarah, seconded by Leah to approve Board Policy 511. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Board Policy 522.3, adults anti-bullying, harassment, non-Titel IX intimidation.
The one suggestion in here, you'll see the third paragraph about reporting procedures, evaluations of any direct supervisors will be accompanied, those procedures will be in the administration for regulation.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve? Second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Carly. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Title one, this is a removal of Board Policy 512 sexual harassment.
Motion to remove.
Second. Motion made by Tom, seconded by Sarah, any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you, Brian and Erin, it was a tremendous amount.
Yeah, thank you.
Even though we just rattled through them real quick.
Thank you very much.
Tell him that's why he'll stop.
Number eight, citizen comments. Any, does anyone here? Number nine, future agenda items, if there's anything that you would like to discuss, please let Dr. Slurno or myself know. And then our future meeting agenda, we have our joint meeting on September 30th, the high school, followed by our board workshop. Anything else?
Yeah, well, thank you for mentioning that, we'll chat two weeks from tonight. Also want to mention, just our second meeting in October is a bit wonky, just simply because of when we get our eight estimates from the state, and so instead of October 21st is our second meeting in the month, it's actually a week later, October 28th. So that means Safety and Wellness will move virtually on October 21st. And then prior to the full board meeting on the 28th, we'll have a Buildings, Grounds and Transportation meeting at 4:30. You can see all that listed there, but just thought I'd create a little heads up for you.
I like to call it a constant party.
Yeah, it's fun, it's just the...
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Second. Motion by Sarah, seconded by Carly, all those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? We are adjourned.